Call the Board of Education meeting back to order. First order of business is introduction of new employees. We'd like to introduce employees who've been recently joined the department and we're gonna start with Norma Jean.
Good afternoon, I am so happy to introduce Dawn Maital, who is going to be my new SEMA, and there are so many acronyms that I have to read. Senior Executive Management. It just means that she is going to know my life, own it, and we're gonna work great together. So, Dawn?
Thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with Norma Jean in the Michigan Department of Education. Welcome.
Welcome. Vanessa, I think you have the other?
Yep. Good afternoon, this is Julie Murphy, she is in our Office of Standards and Assessment. Julie, you wanna come a little bit about what you do?
Yes, in Standards and Assessment, I will be the K-5 Assessment Specialist. And from a previous life, I was a teacher for many, many, many years, and for the last sixteen years, I've been in assessments with a vendor and I'm all kinds of different assessments that I've experienced on.
Welcome. Next, we'll move to public participation in the State Board meeting. Just to clarify any confusion that's out there, the process for the Board is to receive a report and then put that report out for public comment and then decide what actions they're going to take. So, just want to clarify that the Board has not adopted any guidelines to date that is just in the public comment period. With that, I will turn it over to Marilyn to introduce those who would like to speak to the Board.
Okay, I need to remind you of the rules. You will see a timer up here, that's three minutes, each person will be given three minutes to speak. As a practice of the Board, they do not engage in a back and forth conversation at this time. You could be contacted at a future point for a discussion with a Board member. I have got quite a large stack of forms here, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna tell you who's coming to the Board table and then who's next, so you can prepare. And if you just come to the seats at the end of the table, closest to you, and say whatever it is you have to say, we'll turn the timer on, you'll be able to monitor it. If you've got handouts, if you just pass it to one of the people closest to you at the table, they're happy to pass them around the table. We're going to begin with reading a statement. This person was in attendance this morning, it's Representative Amanda Price. She's not able to stay because she's in session, but asked that we read this into the record. Dear State Board Members, as Chair of the House Education Committee, I respect the roles that both the State Board of Education and the Legislature have in the education of children in our state. I'm usually reticent to cross the boundaries between these defined roles because those who authored the most recent version of our Constitution clearly saw value of an independent Board of Education. The Board's proposed guidance on accommodating LGBTQ students first came to my attention through the daily weekly emails that I received from the Department. I was eminently alarmed and continue to be concerned to the point that I am taking this opportunity to express my displeasure with the promulgation of the statement and proposed guidance. All young people and of course, all students attending school in Michigan should be free from harassment, violence, and discrimination, period. However, with regard to the State Board of Education's statement and guidance for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender and questioning students, I believe the State Board of Education has inappropriately inserted itself between the all-important relationship of parent and child in its attempts to be inclusive. Rather than holding the role of parents sacrosanct in the life of a child, the Board, in parentheses, the Government, in the guise of providing guidance for a safe and supportive school environment is forcing a wedge in the communication between parents and their children, resulting in the overall well-being of a child being supplanted by social policy. I believe school boards across Michigan would be wise to take a slow, very thoughtful, very thorough, and thoughtful approach to the guidance document. Likewise, parents should carefully read and respond directly to the State Board of Education. I believe that most parents, as illustrated in the large volume of calls from my constituents and many of the public comments on this matter, will be concerned with the document and what it portends for not the education of our children in Michigan, but the very nature of the relationship between parent and child. Therefore, I encourage the State Board to reconsider their guidance so that family, not top-down engineering of social policy, is the focus in how we provide a safe and accepting learning environment for all students. Sincerely, Amanda Price, State Representative, Chair, House Education Committee. Okay. Now, our first speaker is going to be Antonia Coretto, and that will be followed by Robert Wright. If I mispronounce your name, please feel free to correct me, I'd like you to do that, and I apologize in advance.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Antonia Coretto, clinical psychologist. My doctoral thesis was on the topic of gender nonconformity. I've been reading the research on gender identity for over thirty years and treating transgender patients for over twenty years. I've worked with hundreds of transgender adults and transgender youth. I've met with youth from Adrian to the Zuluwaki Bridge. In addition to the seven counties that surround Metro Detroit, I've met with families from counties such as Manistee, Saginaw, Clare, Alligan, Jackson, and other parts of Michigan and Ohio. I'm here to tell you today that gender identity is not a choice. Developmental psychologists know that children develop a sense of their gender by age seven, independent of their biological sex. No one chooses to be gender nonconforming, just as no one chooses to be gender conforming. One's gender identity is not the result of parental nor peer influence, and efforts to change someone's gender identity are ineffective and damaging. A transgender identity is not the symptom of some pathology. The incidence of depression, anxiety, and suicide among transgender youth is a direct result of lack of support. Research has shown that transgender youth who are supported show improved mental health and overall functioning. A transgender identity is not a sexual preference. Transgender individuals can have any sexual orientation, not necessarily attracted to their birth gender nor the gender with which they identify. A transgender identity and social transition is not undertaken on a whim. By the time an individual discloses their transgender identity, they have made every effort to fit in with their assigned sex. I work mostly with youth who do have family support, and even in those instances, social transition is a slow process. Evaluation confirms the diagnosis, treatment explores all the possible solutions, starting with those that are least disruptive. In my experience, when social transition by a student is necessary, it is well-accepted by other students. And there's no contagion effect. Accepting a transgender student will not lead to other students becoming transgender. I remind you that these guidelines are not mandatory, and they're not drastically different from what already happens in schools. Students use preferred names in bathrooms, and their bathrooms are used based on gender expression, not genitals. And currently, individuals who are uncomfortable about the appearance of their bodies are discreet. Those would continue to occur. There's no evidence that horrible outcomes result from guidelines like these, there's been no increase in gender confusion or sexual assault. This is an issue of fairness and equal access to education and common good. That's all I'll say for today. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Our second speaker is Robert Wright, followed by Aiden Ramirez-Tatum.
Thank you for this opportunity to come and share. I've been a Michigan resident for fifty-three years, have five kids, all in public school. I have a daughter that teaches science, actually at Kent Innovation High that he talked about today, and a great opportunity. I've been an educator myself, a master's level psychologist, I've been in practice for over twenty years, dealt with lots of people, mostly abused, people who have been abused, and also in the transgendered, homosexual community, and all the issues that go along with that, sexual abuse. And while I, to me, the issue that we're talking about isn't the transgender issue, it's the premise that you shared, John, earlier, that in order to create an accepting environment for these groups of people who are real and they have real problems, and I've seen them and I've seen all the problems, that this proposal is the only way to show that. I think that's a false premise. To me, it's like when I talk to a suicide patient, and they're asking me, it's like, I have this real big problem, it's like, yeah, I understand it's a real big problem, but why do you want to cut off your leg because your toe hurts? There's other solutions besides cutting off your leg. There's other ways to get rid of a snake than besides burning down your house. There's other ways to get water to a community than to hook it up to the Flint River. They may work, but at what cost? And I think the premise that I have disagreed with is I'm a big supporter of accepting all people. I have my whole life, I've been involved, I have a son who has a mental disability, so I know what discrimination is. My voice is high. Do you ever call a bank and they can't see you and they think you're a woman? I have to convince them that I'm not a woman. So I understand some of the discrimination that comes about because you're different, you don't quite fit in. But it doesn't mean that this proposal that's being proposed as written is going to accomplish what you're trying to do. From my perspective, as I've talked with my abusers, the sexual abused people that I have that come see me, they're freaked out about this because the bathroom, as it's currently configured, was their safe place, and now they have to be afraid that if they go into the bathroom, somebody else is gonna come in that they don't know, regardless of how they, if they just feel that way that day. That's how it's written. Now, that might not be the intent, but that's the effect that's coming out. This is a PR disaster, and part of the issue and the reason there's such a big reaction is because of the way it's been communicated. I'm not faulting what you're trying to accomplish because I agree with that, but the way it's come across and the way it's going to be implemented is not gonna accomplish what you want. So, I would ask you, plead with you, get more stakeholders in here, talk to those sexual abused people so that they can have a voice and know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Aiden Ramirez-Tatum, followed by James Tatum.
My name is Aiden Ramirez-Tatum. I'm an eighteen-year-old high school senior at Greenville High School. I'm a trumpet player, a club leader, and an AP student, and four years ago, I wanted to die. I was fourteen and had just finished a year of school online, an option I chose after facing three years of consistent bullying in my middle school because I was openly bisexual and gender nonconforming. At the time, I believed what many people still do, that this sort of anguish was simply a symptom of my identity. I was transgender and I would always suffer. In a last-ditch effort to salvage what used to be my life, I transferred in tenth grade to a small charter school under my new name, Aiden. I lasted two weeks. The assistant principal told me that she found it interesting and fascinating that I was transgender because she was a scientist, and that was the tip of the iceberg. I transferred again, and this time, my school worked with me. They asked me about my feelings and what I wanted the school to do. They enacted many of the practices outlined in the guidance that the school board has presented, and I had a future again. I realized my pain was not me, it was a side effect of hatred, not who I was. Had these guidelines been available just a few years ago, how many instances of public humiliation, of degradation, and destruction of self-image of queer youth could have been avoided? How many suicides? These recommendations have the potential to grant strength, to grant hope, to students who have been disproportionately victimized and overlooked in our history. They give a tool to administrators to protect and respect LGBTQ youth in a cohesive manner not ever presented before. There exists legislative and public concern about these guidelines and what they can imply for parents, teachers, and students. And thankfully, enough schools around the country have instituted similar policies with similar descriptions of what gender identity is, and overwhelmingly so, beyond misinformed outrage, few, if any, issues with these guidelines have arose. And we know for sure what will happen if we remain stagnant, if we turn against trans youth. The Williams Institute says forty-one percent of trans people will have attempted suicide by the age of twenty-one. It may be true that hatred and ignorance reads loud and clear, and that the echo of progress has not yet returned to us. It may be true that denying this statement follows the precedent of plugging our ears and pretending trans people don't exist, follows the precedent of the discomfited majority crushing progress under its heels. I do not ask you today if you will ignore that backlash will occur. I ask you today on what side of history you will stand. Do not underestimate the power of your vote. These guidelines could and would save lives. I ask that you do not bow to legislative and public bullying, that you stand tall in the face of those that would sanction you for having the audacity to suggest voluntary guidelines that could change the lives of LGBTQ youth. Morals do not bend to prejudice. Progress does not kneel to fear. So where will you stand? Board, will you stand with me?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. The next speaker is James Tatum, followed by Erin Busby.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members. My name's James Tatum, and I'm not going to sit up here with a bunch of MAs, MBAs, or anything after my name. I'm a father. My son just spoke, it was Aiden. And I have seen what ignorance and discrimination did to my son. When Aiden first came out to my wife and I, and then the community, the school district we lived in had no guidelines regarding transgender youth. And bullying by both the students and the administration caused Aiden to live in fear. He withdrew from this abusive situation, was online schooled for his ninth grade year. We were lucky to use school of choice to attend a district known for its acceptance, that would be Greenville. And in the last three years, Aiden has been a happy-out trans kid. I stand today to support the State Board of Education guidelines for LGBT students as a father who has been there. I've seen my son go from a withdrawn, bullied teen to the top of his class, accepted by both fellow students and administration. These guidelines would protect all children, allowing them to feel safe in their school. When a child feels safe, the mental blocks that they put up to protect themselves are lowered and learning becomes easier. When fear is removed, kids only have to worry about algebra, the Monroe Doctrine, or my least favorite, verb conjugation, not if they will be allowed, not if they will be attacked for using the bathroom consistent with their gender. School is about learning, and these guidelines allow districts, teachers, and staff to treat all children equally. I don't have an education degree, but I stand up here as a father, a father of a very proud son, asking that you not bow to the backlash and do what is right for these children. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Our next speaker is Erin Busby, followed by Alex Cielis.
Hello. My name is Erin Busby. I use she, her, hers, or they, them, theirs pronouns. I'm a GSA Specialist for Michigan Organization on Adolescent Sexual Health. As part of my job, we work with students, we work with schools, with GSAs, which are Gay Straight Alliances, clubs that support LGBTQ youth within the school. I am here in support of the guidelines for safe and supportive schools for LGBTQ students. These guidelines are just that, guidelines, not a law or a mandate. However, implementation of these guidelines will create a space where LGBTQ students and their allies can feel more comfortable and accepted. We as a community, a state, and a society have succeeded at only meeting the status quo of keeping things comfortable for those in privilege, which are often those in power. When we, when you're accustomed to privilege, equality feels like oppression, but it's not. What you're feeling is a discomfort of losing a little bit of your privilege. These are the things that we need to keep in mind when we're talking about making spaces more acceptable for gender nonconforming and trans students. Making bathrooms open for students so that they are comfortable will not change the situation for cis students. Cis students will never have to worry about dropping out of school because they can't use the restroom during the middle of the day. By passing these guidelines, trans students will be able to do the same, will be able to focus on their education and not have to worry about leaving school because they can't simply go pee, which is all that they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Alex Cielis, I'm sure I'm saying this wrong, so please correct me.
Sure.
And my apologies. And Alex will be followed by Stephanie DePonyo.
It's Alex Cielis. Welcome, hi. I go by he, him, and his pronouns, and I'm pleased to be here today as representative of the Michigan Organization on Adolescent Sexual Health, MoASH, and also as a private citizen of Kalamazoo County, who cares deeply about the civil rights and safety of all Michigan youth. Through my work with MoASH, I am regularly in attendance of GSA meetings across the west side of the state. Working with GSAs in high schools reminds me that every school, no matter how large or small, is a community. Inclusive and supportive policies help build the foundation for great communities. All students deserve to feel safe and respected, and that starts with the language a school chooses to use. The students I work with absolutely notice when the school does or does not support them. They knows what it look like, they know what it feels like. And I have seen firsthand the profound benefit of state and of safe and supportive school environments, not just for LGBTQ students, but all students. These guidelines are important for several reasons. One, teachers have requested guidance for best practice in supporting LGBTQ youth because many of them understand that these youth are simply at risk just by being themselves. Two, the guidelines help schools avoid Title IX lawsuits because whether or not there's a moral, religious, or personal opposition to the guidelines, students still have the civil right to learn in a safe environment. These guidelines are important not just for the youth currently in schools, but also for the state itself. I know many bright and talented Michigan high school graduates that are seeking opportunities in more inclusive areas of the nation where they are accepted as their authentic selves. Can we afford to lose these future leaders, thinkers, and doers? Finally, queer youth in Michigan are suffering. As many of you know, heterosexual, homophobic, and transphobic rhetoric is both learned and pervasive in our culture. Youth spend an average of eight hours a day, five days a week, in school buildings. Let's make sure that our schools at least have the option to have the language in place that supports all students for academic and social success. Being a youth isn't easy, and being a queer youth is even more challenging. If schools or communities, let's build them with a foundation that supports all students, regardless of abilities, race, sexuality, gender identity, all youth deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Alex.
Stephanie DePonyo, followed by Taryn Gale.
Hi, everyone, I'm Stephanie DePonyo. I strongly support these guidelines, but I'm gonna be reading a statement from a parent who couldn't be here today. Hello, I am proud to say that I have a transgender daughter. For the first five years of her life, I thought I had a gender nonconforming boy. He would dress up as a princess and play with all things girl. Last year was a major turning point for us. He wanted to wear a dress to school. So, like any good parent would do, I went to the school and tried to create the biggest safety net for my child. I met with the principal, the student, and family specialist, his teacher, lunch and playground supervisors. I also spoke to my oldest cis son's teacher. Everyone was on board. Once the day came, my child was nervous to show her true self to her peers, but they were all very accepting and welcoming. From that day on, my child refused to wear anything but girl clothes. She shared her new name with us because it was necessary for her. She transitioned over the summer. I met with a therapist that specializes in helping those struggling with gender identity, and I met with a gender specialist at the University of Michigan. I also met with several moms like myself who have transgender children. When she began first grade this year, she was welcomed as a girl. We have had bumps over the past year, yes, but she is accepted for who she is, and yes, she uses the girls restroom. She uses the girls restroom because she is a girl, and when she needs to use the facility, she goes into the stall and minds her own business, like we all do, right? This is the way that it should be. To learn, all children need to feel safe and comfortable. They also need to be able to use the facilities in which they identify with when they need to go. It does not make sense for her, nor it is safe for her, to walk into the boys' room and use the bathroom. Other boys would be confused, and it would cause unneeded confusion. These guidelines are not meant to allow students to flippantly switch back and forth between genders. These guidelines were created to help schools in the state and help all students, including those who happen to be LGBTQ, feel safe and comfortable in school. It is imperative that these guidelines be approved for my child as well as yours. Thank you.
The next speaker is Taryn Gale, followed by Jan Stowe.
Hello, my name is Taryn Gale, my pronouns are she, her, hers, and I'm here today as a parent of two children in elementary school. I fully support the guidelines put forth by the State Board of Education and ask that you do what is best for all of our students and vote in support of these guidelines. As a parent, I've seen firsthand the hard position teachers are put in, especially at lower elementary, when they want to affirm their LGBTQ students, but school policy doesn't support that. This guideline document provides teachers with the backing needed for them to have the confidence to do what is best for their students, such as using pronouns in bathrooms that align with their identity. They give the power to teachers to do their job in instituting a safe learning environment where all students can thrive academically and socially. I want to send my children to schools where these guidelines are supported and instituted, not just for my children, but all children and students across the state. These guidelines give us as a state the opportunity to move in the right direction. My children have friends and peers who are not able to feel safe being their authentic selves. This is what upsets my children, not whether someone is in a certain bathroom. Please vote for our students and support these guidelines.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Karen.
Our next speaker is Jan Stowe, and it's my understanding she may have someone coming to the table with her. Whatever way you want to do it is fine, if you want to come by yourself or together.
I can do that. I'll go myself. My twin sister. Yes, I have a question first before I start. This is not a good arrangement for visitors. I've been to many Board meetings, and it's very hard for people sitting over here to hear what you're even saying, what anybody is saying. And I've always had an open Board like this with microphones and, of any kind, and then everyone in the auditorium can hear what everybody is saying. So I just want to pass that on. I'm just shocked to find that our State School Board has an arrangement like this where all of you can hear real well, but the rest of us are left out, a lot of us are left out in the cold. So, would you please think about that? Okay, now, my minutes? Just want to hear what's going on. And I came all the way from Kalamazoo, Michigan. I'm a former public school teacher, so I have been in public schools the first part of my married life, and when I had my children, I, my husband and I both decided that I wanted to stay home, bring up my kids at home like my mom brought us up. My husband was also a public school teacher in Portage for thirty-seven years. We have four, six other teachers in our family, public school teachers, so we have, we've all been in public schools. And I love my students very much, all of them. I didn't hold anything against anyone, knowing anything about anybody. I'm a Christian, I believe that God, I stand firmly for Christ, that God created all of us, and He loves all of us and died for all of us, and I stand for what the Bible says. And I, so I, I'm coming from that perspective. Now, I received information about this, didn't know about it beforehand, from the American Decency Association in Fremont, Michigan, which is a wonderful Christian organization. And my husband and I have been in that for years. It says, "The State Board of Education has issued a guidance policy for public schools regarding lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, LGBTQ students, which would allow students of all ages to choose their gender, change their name and pronoun, use the bathroom of their choice. This would all be done without parental knowledge or permission." That really struck me. Because in all the years as a public school teacher, I don't know if you can hear me back here, as a public school teacher, in all the years of all, a public school teachers in my family, we always treasured the input of the parents from day one of every single student, and if there was a problem, we called them in, and that solved the problem. We worked with the parents hand in hand, and it's just unthinkable that these changes would take place in a school without the parents being notified in advance. Every parent of every child in a public school in Michigan should receive a letter through the mail of what you're doing here, and to have them not know about it and find out later to me is immoral and unthinkable, and I think you're at risk for lawsuits. So, it says here from the Board, a quote, "The responsibility of determining a student's gender identity rests with the student. Outside information from medical or mental health professionals or documentation of legal changes is not needed." This is shocking to me. I wonder how many people in the state of Michigan who have children in public schools are aware of this. School staff should address students by their chosen name and pronouns that correspond to their gender identity regardless of whether there has been a legal name change. The Board of Education guidance doesn't stop with names and pronouns, it also urges school districts to support the formation of extracurricular student-led clubs such as Gay Straight Alliances, Gender and Sexuality... I'm done, aren't I?
If you could wrap up, please.
Can I wrap up?
Quickly, please.
Thank you. Gender and Sexuality Alliances and pushes for teaching of LGBTQ rights across all curricula. This I am totally, this needs to be discussed by the state of Michigan, the state legislature. These are massive changes that you're making here. I have two nephews who became homosexuals, they got in with the wrong people, they died of AIDS. Okay, this is a familiar topic to me and my, our whole family. It just put a sword to the heart of our whole family. Okay, so I've studied this issue for years as a parent, a teacher, a relative. Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you for being here. You can submit comments online as well, or submit them in writing, and we'll also look at them.
At the next meeting in, next month, are you going to vote after the public comment?
Or not, we don't know when we'll bring it for vote. Look for, we'll tell, we don't have a plan yet. We're listening to public comments, so.
Okay, I want to come back next month, and I'll finish my speech then.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Senator Patrick Colbeck, followed by Jane Locke.
Thank you very much, board members. Appreciate the opportunity to make public comment in regards to the proposed LGBTQ policy that the State Board of Ed is promoting. It was kind of troublesome when I learned about this, and I wanted to make sure that on behalf of the constituents of the 7th Senate District that I shared a lot of the feedback that I've received from people in my district. And I know the intent of this is potentially well-intentioned around the idea of providing a safe and secure environment for students that may classify themselves as LGBTQ. But unfortunately, the policies that are being promoted here by the State Board of Ed actually do the exact opposite. They actually promote behaviors that are not leading, are not supportive of safety, not supportive of good health, not supportive of a safe environment, secure environment, not just for those students that choose that, but also for all the other students that are in that environment. You know, it's not bullying from, bullying or peer pressure that leads to a higher incidence of AIDS in LGBT community than the normal population. That has nothing to do with some of the policy provisions that are put in here. You know, during elementary and middle school, I was bullied incessantly. I haven't seen the State Board of Ed propose a policy for kids that get good grades and carry a trombone, right? So you know what got me through that time? What got me through that time was my faith and my family. Two things that are, that the State Board of Ed policy that's currently being promoted don't seem to take into account. As a matter of fact, in the case especially of family, they specifically try to circumvent that, that support network. And for me, that's a concern. And so on behalf of the citizens of the 7th Senate District, I just want to make sure that you understand that I appeal to you to not to adopt this policy and focus in on those areas that really true can help our students. Let's get back into the mode of pursuing educational excellence for all of our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, for being here. Appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Jane Locke, followed by Liliana Angel Reyes. Is Jane Locke, oh yes, sorry, I didn't see you coming.
My name's Jane Locke. I live in Howell, Michigan. I come here principally as just an interested individual, as a parent, like you all, but also someone who is probably very grossly underrepresented. I'm a Pentecostalenean Christian conservative. I'm a business owner, and I'm a professional engineer, but I'm also a transsexual woman who has been grossly discriminated against my entire life. As a gender nonconforming child, growing up in the 50s and coming of age in the 60s, I can assure you without any doubt that bullying can be incredibly intense for any LGBT student, particularly for someone who is gender nonconforming. I would wager that, Senator and I, this Senator Colbeck and I have some mutual friends, unbeknownst to him, I was at one time part of the Livingston County GOP. I can assure you that when he carries his trombone home from school, that nobody lied in wait for him, to chase him, to see if they could catch him, to beat him senseless for playing his trombone. But that is routinely what happened in the 50s and 60s to LGBT students. And on top of that, if you ever came out to your parents, you are more than likely to be beaten by your parents, or taken to doctors and urged to be institutionalized, or just simply thrown away like so much garbage. The parents are very concerned about the aspects of not being involved in their children's lives while they're in school. But I can tell you firsthand that these children, many of these children come from very unaccepting parents, and they risk being thrown to the gutter. Forty percent of the homeless children today are LGBT children who have been thrown away by their parents, the ones that they should trust with their very heart and soul, but yet their parents cannot come to grips with the reality that they have a nonconforming child and throw them away. And their lives end up oftentimes self-inflicted harm culminating in their own death. That is the reality of what you're facing when you include an angry parent who is totally unaccepting of their child. And that's what I want to caution you against. And there are several of these children back here who will testify, I'm sure, to that very same fact. So be cautious going forward in how you include the parents in these decisions, because oftentimes these parents are not accepting, and they will throw their children to the road. My own cousin was tossed out on the street at age 13 merely for kissing a boy. And I do speak from experience, and each and every one of you know that this is true. Thank you very much for hearing my story.
Thank you for being here.
Liliana Angel Reyes, followed by Evan Murphy.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Liliana Angel Reyes. I'm the Youth Program Manager at Affirmations. Affirmations is Michigan's largest lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community center. Affirmations and I are in total agreeance with this policy. We think that it supports, embraces, and defines a level of equality within the school district. I have worked in school districts and schools and youth from Kalamazoo to Saginaw, and I've worked with a whole lot of LGBT youth and GSAs and diversity clubs. And one of the biggest things that they talk about is not being able to be authentically themselves, not being embraced by who they are. And research shows that youth who are embraced for who they are have a better level of education, tend to not drop out. And the youth who do experience such stigma do drop out at higher rates. They have higher rates of substance abuse, and they have higher rates of suicide. And we do have a lot of parent involvement within the LGBT community as well. A parent sent an email about her trans daughter who was born male and transitioned to be a woman, and she talked about how she embraced and loved the natural phenomenon of transitioning in a child, not transitioning genders, but growing. And she said that she was proud and loved her child. And she talked about how her child walked through school almost every day and was harassed and embarrassed and called freaks. And so she, she asked, think about that. How would you feel walking through school every day and then going home and hearing the same thing? And so a lot of people are saying parent support, and it's important, but what if parents don't have your support, and you're getting the same embarrassment and stigma at home and in school? And this parent cautioned, saying, shouldn't the school be a safe place for the youth? Shouldn't it be a place where it emphasizes networking and diversity and strength, growing in education? And I think it's really important that this policy get passed, and I think it's really important that we also do education within the schools so that those people can implement the policies properly. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Evan Murphy, followed by Skylar Farber.
Hello. My name is Evan Murphy. I am 18 years old. I go to Skyline High School where I'm a senior. In a month, I will go to prom, I will wear a tuxedo, I will take a girl. However, we're still sitting here debating about what bathroom I can use. I can drive, I can legally go buy lottery tickets, and yet we're sitting here debating if I should be protected in the school system that I've been in for all of my life. I've gone to Anna Republic Schools all of my life, and without the support of the people, I have been so blessed. I have been more blessed than most. I came out when I was 14, and had it not been for the support of my community, for the groups that I found, for the friends I made, I would not be here. And I know people who are not here. And you know, my friend who was not so lucky, who didn't have such good home life, who was constantly having to deal with stuff at home, he would come into school and he would just come home, and you know, he would develop like ridiculous UTIs because he couldn't go to the bathroom at his own school. So on top of all of that, I just, I don't understand how this is even a debate. People will come up here and they will tell you that they care about all of these children. And I know they don't care about me. I know they don't care about my friends. If they cared about all of the children, they would be protecting all of the children. It doesn't make any sense to me that this is a debate. I don't understand why queer kids are being punished for things we assume that people will do after people try to protect us. I don't understand why I'm being punished, because people who aren't me are abusing rights that I don't even have yet. With all of that said, all of the things that are going on, all of the things that are in this proposal are already happening. It doesn't matter if you don't want them to happen. They're already happening, and what you're doing is, what you would do by passing this through would be allowing, would be allowing and protecting those who are vulnerable in these instances. It's not about taking away anyone's rights, it's about giving them to people.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Skylar Farber.
Hello, everybody. My name is Skylar. I'm 14, and I am a transsexual, transgender male. I go to Scarlet Middle School, and I'm here because my teachers misgender me, and my counselor will not use my preferred name, which my parents support, they support me fully. My counselors will not use my preferred name on my attendance sheets. I'm scared to go to the men's restroom at Scarlet Middle School because the people are undereducated about LGBTQ plus people, and especially on what transgender means. Even though I will tell my teachers and my students and my peers that I am a boy, if I walked into the men's restroom, they would still say, oh, my gosh, there's a girl in the men's restroom. Educating students on this will provide so much more acceptance now and later in the future. For people with homophobic and transphobic parents, being taught about this, this will end many lines of conservative thoughts. Those who are taught about this stuff from their homo, those who have homophobic parents and are taught about accepting and supporting transgender and LGBTQ plus youth, they will pass it on to their younger generations and start a chain reaction of acceptance. Education, educating every student on acceptance and support and being an ally to trans and queer youth, teaching them how to use pronouns and asking about someone's pronouns, telling students that whatever bathroom, to use whatever bathroom makes them comfortable, and letting them use their preferred name and putting it on attendance sheets, that's what's going to help people in the future. It'll save lives, and it'll end homophobic and transphobic comments and thoughts. It'll make universities and schools all around a safer place for transgender and queer youth, and I think that's what we all need. And in response to a person who had said something. I did not need my parents or anyone else's thoughts or opinions on how to label my identity. I chose my identity because it is who I am. I found it inside of me. I, I contradicted what I said. I did not choose it. I found it inside of me. I had to explore it myself. I did not need anyone else's opinions on who I was. I did not need anyone telling me, you are a boy. I found it inside of myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Our next speaker is Iliana Ball, followed by Emma Heath.
It's actually Iliana Ball, thank you.
Thank you for correcting me.
You're welcome. So hi, I'm Iliana, and I have a letter for all of you. So I am one of the many teens who is a part of the group Riot Youth, an LGBTQ A-plus support and activist group out of the Neutral Zone Teen Center of Ann Arbor, Michigan. And I am so glad to be here. For those of you who may or may not know, members of Riot Youth added youth voice to the proposal for schools to become more inclusive LGBTQ A-plus students. This proposal is meant to keep everyone safe in school and create better intersectionality between students and staff, as no one should feel unsafe and unheard while they are trying to get a simple education. The one section in the proposal that I most connected with was the section on training staff and administrators to be more inclusive of LGBTQ A-plus students, as it is so, so important to have these students know that they are cared for. It can be so difficult to focus in class when you know you aren't protected. I know this firsthand. I was forced to switch schools due to feeling isolated by my other students. For me, Skyline High School in Ann Arbor, Michigan was unsafe as a queer identifying teen. While staff did work on becoming more inclusive, it was still a struggle to get by. I felt like I had nowhere safe to go and felt like I had no one to talk to. I was seen as different from the rest of my peers due to how I identify myself as an openly queer, gender-fluid individual, and not many people understand what that means. And as history goes, people feel what they don't understand. I've dealt with a lot of anxiety and depression because of this, and it has greatly affected me in more ways than one. I'm lucky enough to have the supportive and understanding space that I do in the Neutral Zone, but not many other teens do. If this proposal had already been in place when I was at a former school, my formal school, I may have stayed. I may have enjoyed the start of my senior year. And even though I will be graduating, I want to know that my peers will be protected by staff after I graduate. School is already so very stressful, and I heavily believe that we all need to ensure the safety of LGBTQ A-plus individuals, as we're all just like the rest of you. I want all of you to know one thing. There have been so many undocumented incidents of trans people getting attacked in the bathroom for being trans, whereas I've never heard of a cisgender person being attacked by a trans person for being cisgender in the bathroom. And I want to get one thing clear. Gender and sex are two different things. Oh, they can correlate with each other, that's not always the case. I am here to support my fellow LGBTQ A-plus identifying peers and to let you all know that I care so much about the safety of all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emma Heath, followed by Lori Myers. Is Emma Heath here? H-E-T-H?
She's not speaking.
Not speaking? Lori Myers is next.
Thank you. I'm Lori Myers. I'm the secretary of the Plymouth Canton PFLAG and a parent. PFLAG is a support group for parents and friends and allies of LGBTQ people. I strongly support the board's statement on safe and supportive learning environments for LGBTQ students. I am just a normal mom, my mom. My son came out to us as bisexual when he was 16, 12 years ago. We were surprised, but responded as any parent would with our love and support. I came to become an advocate for LGBTQ rights through PFLAG. At our monthly support meetings, I've heard many stories, like the ones you've heard today, of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender kids who were bullied in middle school and high school, and who have tried to harm themselves. As Mr. Austin mentioned earlier this morning, LGBTQ kids in Michigan are far more likely to be verbally or physically harassed at school. There is a great need for this statement and policy guidance. I I regret that most of the comments on the policy have reacted to fear of boys in girls' bathrooms. I know a number of young trans people. I can assure you that they are no threat to other kids in the bathroom or anywhere. The very last thing they want to see, they want is to let other kids see that they have different body parts. On the contrary, most trans kids avoid going to the bathroom at school. Imagine how you would feel about school if you couldn't go to the bathroom. Following this policy would put school districts in alignment with Title IX and make life a little bit easier for trans kids at school. I thank the Board of Education for writing this policy and I urge you to adopt it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Riley Moreau, followed by Michael Davy.
Hi, my name is Riley. I am a representative for the Marshall High School Gay Straight Alliance. As a bisexual male, I consider myself extremely fortunate. I have friends and family that support me regardless of how I am. I've never felt pressured to tell them about aspects of my life that may not be readily apparent. And I've always felt safe to be myself around them. Sadly, this is not always the case for LGBTQ youth. The Williams Institute of UCLA reports that of homeless youth in the United States in drop-in centers, street outreach programs, and housing programs, between 30 and 43% responded as LGBTQ. Of these LGBTQ youth, with some overlap, 46% reported to have run away because of how their family rejected their sexual orientation or gender identity. And 43% reported to have been forced out by their parents because of this. With 32% reporting abuses at home and 14% reporting neglects. The American Journal of Public Health and the CDC report that LGBTQ youths are twice as likely to attempt to commit suicide as their heterosexual counterparts. And one in five LGBT youth reported being threatened or injured by a weapon on school grounds. When I look at the proposal at hand, I see nothing but solutions to the violence and neglect that a disproportionate number of our LGBTQ youth are facing today. Providing educational resources for teachers, parents, and students alike, providing counseling for marginalized students who feel unsure or unsafe, and providing measures to protect and support LGBTQ students in a place where they should feel safe to express themselves in a positive manner are all major steps to a safer and healthier learning environment. The International Journal of Child, Youth, and Family Studies reported that schools with a GSA and anti-homophobic, anti-homophobia policies for more than three years had LGBT students with the fewest suicidal thoughts and attempts. The Journal of Youth and Adolescence reported that the lowest levels of depression, alcohol, and marijuana use, and suicidal feelings for all groups of students were the lowest when a positive, or when in a positive school climate and when not experiencing homophobic teasing. The proposal is not just about helping our LGBTQ youth. It's about helping every youth in our state and hopefully as time goes on, our nation. This is not to say that every school is not doing what they should. They're not taking steps to protect their students because there are those who are taking the right steps. That being said, there are enough who do not take these steps to make this proposal not only warranted, but necessary to keep every student in our state and our nation safe. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Davy, followed by Lamar Lemmons.
I haven't felt quite so irrelevant in my life because I've come to talk to you about something else. Forgive me. I don't mean to cheapen your cause. I've come to talk about success. I've come to talk in behalf of the network of Michigan educators. I'm from Lons Cruz School District in Macomb County. I teach English at Diane Pellerin Center. It's an outstanding alternative high school. And I have some eloquent words here, more eloquent than I'm afraid I'm able to accomplish because the three minutes is supposed to be five. I prepared a speech for five minutes and just started it because I can't squeeze it into three. May I stand, please?
Yeah.
I'll collapse otherwise. I, I have a box. The wonderful thing about a box is that you get to wonder about what wonderful things are inside and why that's the province of limitless possibility and curiosity. And if education has a, well, a soul, perhaps these are its chief constituents. If you want the kids to be curious all the time and to understand that there are no limits to what's possible. Within the box is the secret to motivating the kids at our school. And outside of the box is a poem. It's a true story that a kid told me not too terribly long ago. She said at the end of class, "I just wanted to stay," said the young lady with the, of the learning that day, with a sad smile on her face. Why? That hour she knew. In the span of one class that her mind grew a little. But in place of the fire that should burn with success, doubt whispered reminders that she always forgets. The poor kid learns stuff one day and the next day it's gone. It's part of a population, a kid afflicted by the same problem. It has to do with motivation perhaps or whatever. My job's to try to fix it somehow. Because it gets codified. Oh, God, I'm running out of time. Look, the Lons Cruz Foundation provided a grant. I took the cash and I bought 240 of these. But this is a neuron. This is an axon. This is a dendrite. This is a synapse. And together they constitute one brain cell. The kids go into my literature course, they acquire learning, they emboss the learning on these dendrites, place them thus in the neuron, then they take them outside in the hallway and they build this massive brain model. It's an analog of what's going on in their own heads. And because they're doing experiential learning, they're learning stuff and then they're doing stuff with the learning, followed by a blizzard of formative assessments and all the stuff necessary to codify the learning. And they go all of these field trips. It works well. And I've got a little bit of statistical evidence here to prove it from the Wabash National Study of Liberal Arts Education. 20% of our kids at first said, of these eight items on here, which are all cool for it, you want these kids to have these attitudes? 20% said, "We got those attitudes." But after this, nine weeks, nine weeks of building these neurons and learning stuff and seeing it on paper and tracking it themselves, they started to like it themselves. And 36% of them said that they want to be in school now. It was, they cared about doing a good job. They were motivated. It was real cool. I had to come and tell you that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, Michael.
Well.
Thank you.
Lamar Lemmons is next, followed by Elizabeth Bauer.
Well, after, I don't know whether to be envious or relieved that I don't have to deal with these issues because we are disempowered. And I'm here to talk about the disempowered Detroit Board of Education, where we have been disenfranchised and Jim Crowed and set aside. I've come here to beseech you to oppose any dissolution or replacement of the Detroit Public School District with any experimental configuration as proposed in the community of schools districts and Senate Bill 710 and 711. I've come here to ask you to do so in writing and through a vote of your body, one way or the other, to oppose any further intervention and experimentation on the Detroit School District and our children. I've come here to ask you that, that you demand that the state of Michigan immediately conduct a specific audit to determine the causes and origins of the deficit of the school district in the city of Detroit and to apply proportional allocation of responsibilities. I've come here to ask that you mandate that the state of Michigan reimburse and reconcile the Detroit Public School District for all outstanding funds due under Headley as well as the liquidations that would include all unauthorized liquidations of property by the Detroit, that was not authorized by the Detroit Public School District. We would ask further that you move and do so in writing and if your position is somewhat nuanced and difference that you do, convey that to our body at your earliest convenience. I've also come to let you know that we have, and you probably have heard, are suing the state for the misfeasance, malfeasance, and for the operations of the Detroit Public School District and for the lack of accounting of $2 billion that are, where we have 100 schools and, that are in shambles, but we, the citizens have allocated $2 billion and those schools still remain in disrepair, unhealthy halls sitting in the school district. And because there was not an elected school board, because there has not been transparency, because there has not been oversight, our district is suffering and we believe so that it's done such because we are a predominantly minority African-American school district. So we would ask that you submit in writing and we would ask that at least one of you introduce and another you support for a vote and discussion, those things I have just outlined. Thank you.
Thank you, Lamar, for being here.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Bauer, followed by the Washtenaw Intermediate School District staff and students.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Bauer from Ferndale, Michigan. I noticed on your agenda today, you're going to talk about the top 10, becoming a top 10 education system in the, in the states. And I reread my input to you from last September and a lot of it hung on professional preparation and as of preparing teachers at the college level and professional learning ongoing throughout their career. And I thought about the issues on our table, the guidance, not a policy as some people think, guidance for the addressing gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual issues in the schools. And the other is the package of bills on seclusion and restraint. So I just say to remind you that to be a top 10 state in education, you have to have student achievement. And for students to achieve, they have to have a concerned, caring, respectful environment that's respectful of them in all their diversity. So I'm not telling you anything new. You've heard it from me for 20 years. Anyway, the young people you heard from today are champions. You need to be their champion. You need to stand tall with this guidance. Don't get swayed away. Don't water it down. They can't live if you water it down. And so I just want you to remember that champions never quit. And you be their champion and don't quit either. My second comment regards the package of bills on seclusion and restraint. I'm going to be meeting with some of the sponsors after this meeting. They do mirror the state's guidance, policy direction from 2006 and in that regard, they are true to that. But as some of you will recall, I took issue with that policy direction back in 2006 because I believe there was too much focus on what restrictive strategies can be used, where, when, and how, and how reported, rather than on eliminating their use altogether. And if you're in a child caring institution or mental health or corrections, you're not allowed to use those functions. They're not part of the program. They can't be in somebody's plan. And so I want you to think about alternatives in the way we prepare educators so that they can provide a safe environment for all youth regardless of the behaviors they use to express behaviorist communication that may be not the behaviors you want. I did, we should be promoting a culture of gentleness, preparing educators and all education service personnel to support students without resorting to restraint and seclusion. I was going to read to you, my time just ran out, but the culture, the Center for Positive Behavior Supports in the Department of Mental Health has written to Governor, Lieutenant Governor Calley about alternatives to the practices prescribed in the series of bills on seclusion and restraint. I'll forward it to you by email. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
The next is a group, I believe, Washtenaw Intermediate School District Staff and Students.
For a quick point of reference, if there's three of us, is there any way we're thinking of expanding time or are we subjected to the three-minute timeframe as well?
It said three minutes per person. We'd be willing to make five or six minutes if that would be a negotiated type of thing, if that would be okay.
Yes, so let me, let me bump you up to five here.
You're a good negotiator.
I appreciate it. I tried.
William Shatner.
We really thank you for your time and patience with this as well, too.
And when you start, will you kindly tell us your names?
Sure.
Thanks.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to speak before you today. My name is Eric Thompson. I'm a supervisor, special education supervisor with the Washtenaw Intermediate School District.
I'm James Clemmo and I'm in the Young Adult Project with John Rose.
And thanks for introducing me. I'm John Rose. I'm a teacher consultant for the Washtenaw Intermediate School District and I work with James. I'm various young adults.
Yeah. And we're here today to talk to you about programs for young adults with disabilities in Washtenaw County and the success that we've had in the area of employment. Many of you have probably heard about Lieutenant Governor Calley's and Justice Bernstein's Hidden Talent Tour. And we're very pleased to let you know that the talents of our young adults with disabilities in Washtenaw County are no longer hidden. And that's due in large part to the fact that we have eight classrooms for our young adults that are located in the community and not in the school building, two of which are located on college campuses, one at Eastern Michigan's University and also one at Washtenaw Community College. We also are very fortunate to have a unique program that we call the Young Adult Project in which it's not a classroom at all, but teacher consultants and teacher assistants actually go into the students' own community to provide services for them. And our outcome data from the last school year shows that we had 49 students out of 152 obtain paid competitive employment, or 32%. In our Young Adult Project, we had 27 out of 40 students obtain paid competitive employment, or 68%. Comparing that to national average for individuals with disabilities, which is at 17%, and the state of Michigan, which is at 19%, you can see we're well above the national and state averages. Now, we can't do this without great partnerships. We work very closely with Michigan Rehabilitation Services and Community Mental Health and it's also through the dedicated staff and the talented young people that we work with. And with that, I'll pass it over to John and James.
Okay. Real quickly, too, and I'm going to let James read, this was his IAPC that we pulled together that James and his mom actually put together. It's a little three-page thing that we actually put into the formalized document. You did it in this kitchen, right, with your mom?
Yeah.
And we had it at the Maze Restaurant in downtown Ypsilanti at Ypsilanti, and he invited the people he wanted to go to.
Yeah.
So I'm going to help him with the narrative with this and such, too, so James can tell his story. Okay? So go for it, James. I'll interrupt you once or twice about some clarifications.
Hi, I am James Clemmo and welcome to my IAP. Would each of you introduce yourselves? Thank you. I am in the Young Adult Project. These are the things that I am good at. Advocating for myself, keeping appointments, good with socializing with people. Would others like to share what I, what I am good about doing? These are my concerns. What will I be doing after school? Does others have concerns for me? I live in my own home and I have no place to move.
And this is why I'm going to stop you real quickly. One of the things we were able to do is the apartment project on EMU's campus, where you were able to share an apartment with an EMU student.
Yeah.
How long were you there for?
Two years.
How did that go?
Good.
Good. How did it happen after we got out of that two-year-first-apartment type of situation living on your own? How did that go?
Not so.
Not so good. So, so we had to work through those things, right?
Right.
Because sometimes life stinks, doesn't it? So what happened then?
There was one of the most students named Ben. I moved in and that was it.
And you moved into your own house right off of Eastern Michigan's campus?
Yeah.
Do you like it there?
Oh, yeah.
You want to move?
No.
Okay, good.
Church, home, and eastern. These are my hobbies, interest, sports, music, spending time with families and friends. I currently work- I currently work at the University of Michigan Graduate Library and the World Books Collections. I would like to look for employment elsewhere.
Stop you just real quickly there. So you like to look for employment elsewhere. He's looking at you about sports, he volunteers with EMU football program and loves it there, music, and you want us to explain PEAK real quickly?
PEAK is a bike organization. John Waterman started it when one of his students was there, and it's to educate our cyclists how to keep cyclists safe on the roads.
Okay. Okay, well, we just move on here, too, right, and we do the daily living.
Well, I would like to expand cooking skills. These are the concerns about how I'm getting into my bike. Can PT assist me with this?
Yeah, and real quickly, too, he had issues with his bike, so PT Services helped him with that as well, too. Okay, so, okay, you want to just keep going there, too? How about, these are some activities he liked to do.
Best buddies, EMU football, church, PEAK with the bike riding program. Do you have any thoughts, goals I need for this year? Support I need to be successful? I need support to understand, sign papers, PT supports.
And his mom's Chris, so I'm going to share this piece relevant, too. She just retired as a special education teacher, so some of the issues she had was about guardianship issues with adults with disabilities. Supports for James because he retired, she was able to go on long trips and things like that, wanted to know what would happen, like emergency protocols and stuff, like she was planning a trip to India, so what would happen with that. Supports also for what, she's not able to care for James, who would be able to support him and care for him as well, too, and improving your writing styles and things like that.
Yeah.
And so we did that as well, too. So.
Okay. Supports for, is there anything else that we need to talk about? Thank you for attending my I E P.
So we just use this simple document, put it in the formalized document, and James ran his meeting as well, too, in the place that he wanted to do. So we wanted to share that with you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just have one quick statement. We would like to point out that we have a May 3th milage, and the generosity of our local community makes it possible to support the kinds of programs that produce results for individuals like James.
Thank you very much for being here.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Luanne Bodry, followed by Jennifer Schlosser.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you. I'm kind of in awe about the many folks that have spoken before me in support of this guidance statement. And I'm here as a parent, I'm a grandparent, and I'm a great-grandparent. I live in Lansing. I coordinate a statewide initiative called Parenting Awareness Michigan, but I'm not here in a professional capacity. I'm here as a parent and a citizen of our wonderful city, and a citizen of our state and our nation. I also was part of the review process for this document, so I just wanted to share that with you, so you would know that. I believe that this proposed guidance and statement on safe and supportive learning environments for LGBTQ students is to be very inclusive, well-thought-out, well-researched. And I really love the statement that is in the guidance statement. It is the position of the State Board of Education that students should be treated equally and fairly, free from discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on their real or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. I fully support this proposed guidance statement. I believe that this is very well-thought-out, and I am hoping that the State Board of Education will approve these guidelines, mainly because it's the right thing to do. I think that we need to really look at the challenges that our students face today, and I feel that many of the fear-mongering statements that others have written and spoken about are really just that, fear-mongering. I feel that it is, they are statements made out of not understanding, and then fear of the unknown, as other people have said. No one becomes LGBTQ. You are. You don't become. So you don't choose, and others have said that, too, so I won't belabor that. I feel that supporting and adopting this guidance statement will allow the State Board of Ed, adults, others, to be the role models, the role models for our children, to be caring and supportive adults in a society where we need to show our students that they're important, no matter what.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Schlosser, followed by Ellie Tingston.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Schlosser, and just became aware of this meeting this morning on the news, thankfully. I come as a mother of two beautiful young daughters, both adopted, six months apart, fourth and fifth grades right now, having a great time with them. I reviewed this statement and guidance, thankfully, to the person who was able to direct me to it. I fully support public education. I fully support the need to have respect for all people. I'm extremely religious, but that has taught me to love everyone with no exclusions. And my heart breaks for some of the stories that we've heard today, and for some of the stories that I've known of in the past for the LGBTQ community, and the things that they suffer. I fully understand that there is a need to do something about this on educational level. And for most part of the document, I fully support what's being proposed. My concern, as a mother of two young girls, is in regards to the bathroom and locker room policy. Now, it has nothing to do with the LGBTQ community, and I said that wrong, but my concern is that it's creating an open-door policy for the restrooms and the locker rooms. How are you going to prevent anyone from going into any restroom? Not everyone here probably knows of situational child molesters. My extended family now has, my brother-in-law's in jail, and just completely tragic situation, and it's not the norm, but situational issues arise, and opening, creating an open-door policy to restrooms at elementary age, middle school age, high school age, restrooms are going to create issues that I know all of us have in our heads. I don't want to discourage anyone from creating good policy, and I think that this policy's on the right track, and I completely understand and recognize the need for it. My question is, can we revise the bathroom policy and create something that everyone can handle? And I think that that needs to start on a state level, and I think it, you know, is becoming a national issue. My background is design, and I can tell you there are ways to create restrooms that could be open for all, that would make me, as a parent, feel safe with daughters in the restroom. But I think just flat-out saying, okay, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to do it now, is not the right way to approach it. I completely sympathize, and want there to be something in effect that will help everyone, because it is tragic, the stories that we've heard today, the stories that we're aware of. But I've seen it from the other side, too, and I just want to make sure that everyone is protected, including my daughters. And again, it's not that community that I fear. It's creating an open-door policy that really I have an opinion about, and I think if you just remove that portion or revised it, and start working with state-building code, people to redesign restrooms, and not creating new restroom situations that would allow for anyone to be there and be safe, that would be better. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Our next speaker is Ellie Tingston, followed by Tim Totten.
Hello, my name is Ellie. My pronouns are they, them, theirs. This is my first year at Michigan State University, and just last year, I was a senior at Troy High School. And I want to share with you why I care about this proposal. And everything really started for me when I was at the beginning of my high school career, just a first year. I knew that my gender wasn't always spoon-fed to me. I knew that it was, I knew that it was, I knew that I wanted to experiment with something different, but I wasn't ready to come out as trans. I didn't know if I was trans yet. I just wanted to portray myself differently and see how it felt. But I was worried about potential harassment that would come from identifying with the trans community, and I was worried about my family finding out, and how my family would react to this. This dysphoria that I felt prevented me from playing sports, it prevented me from going to extracurricular activities, prevented me from going to many dances. Oh, my goodness, at the dances I went to. Parents would always want the classic all-girls picture and the all-boys picture. All the girl, all my friends would be in the all-girls picture, and then I'd just be hanging at the end of the boys' picture with my friends' dates. Not only did I feel misplaced, I mean, I visibly looked misplaced in these pictures. It wasn't until my senior year that I had decided that my dysphoria was worse than the fear of potential harassment, than the fear of my parents finding out that I was going to wear a dress. So I decided that I was going to wear prom, I was going to go to prom, and I was going to present myself as I had always seen myself. And when I was at prom, I felt so elated. I mean, my friends, we decided that we would have an all-girls group, and I felt so validated. My friends were very supportive, even most of my schoolmates were so supportive of me. It was such a great experience. But that's not to say that I nev, that's not to say that there weren't times when I felt unsafe. And the one time that I did feel unsafe was when I was wearing a dress in the boys' bathroom. A week or so prior to the prom, I talked with my school administrators and told them that I was planning on wearing a dress. I asked about gender non-conforming bathrooms. They told me that that had never come up to them before, and on the night of prom, they insisted that I would have to use the boys' restroom. So I went to the bathroom, I was just going to do my business as fast as I could, and I was going to leave. After I finished my business, there was a little line for to use, to wash your hands. And it was while I was waiting in line, when I was alone with the men, that people started whistling at me, these boys started catcalling me. I felt so objectified, I just left the restroom, I used the hand sanitizer I had brought with me in my bag. And the most surprising part was, the entire night, nobody said anything negative to me. Nobody dared to say anything mean to me while I was on the dance floor or anything. Things could have been so much worse if I was at a more conservative school, but I wasn't, and I would just really like you all to support, to vote in support of these proposals, because so many students have it so much worse than I had it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Totten, followed by Lawrence Hoag.
Hello, I am a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader, and I am adamantly opposed to this proposal or guidance because, mainly because of the parental wedge that's being driven there, and keeping parents in the dark, and the bathroom situation. I'm also a foster parent, with my wife and I, and I've been struck by some of these testimonies of some of these young people about the, their families not being abusive and being the number-one their enemy, okay? But I think what this proposal recommends is that parents be left in the dark. And also, what I hear from some of these young people, yes, their families, what they need is unconditional love. And Jesus Christ is all for that, and I'm a Christian, and I'm all for that. And I would take, you know, some of these kids and give them unconditional love, but to say that the school, then, can keep me in the dark, okay? It doesn't make any sense. I understand the need to protect some of these kids against abusive parents, okay? But don't make it a blanket recommendation to, to keep families in the dark. And yes, the bathroom situation. Why can't we just come up with unisex bathrooms, sink for a single person, as a solution? Because, again, I feel that opening up bathrooms creates more hostility in the general population in, for everybody. And have a, do have a safe bathroom that can be used by someone who needs that kind of privacy. And I'm, and the other thing I wanted to say is that I don't need to be educated on these issues. I understand. I see the need. So, and I teach my children values of respect for all. So we don't need to be educated, and I would call it indoctrinated, with what's right and what's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Before Marilyn calls anybody else, I just want to say, has anybody not turned in a form that would like to speak? All right, if you could turn in the form, and then we will not take any more forms after that, because we still have a long list, and we want to get everybody in who has got their form in. But there will be opportunities to speak at future meetings, or people can go online at www.everyvoicecounts.com. And make sure your comments are heard there as well. Thank you, and if you could call.
Okay. Lawrence Hoag is next, followed by Victor Torres.
Hello, my name is Larry Hoag. I'm a parent and a senior at East Lansing High School. I have two sons, cisgender sons. I'm here as an ally of the LGBTQ community, and I really want to commend the board for considering these guidelines. I fully support these guidelines. And when we're weighing these different issues of bathrooms versus all of the things that trans kids have to deal with, and the fact that many become homeless and many commit suicide, I think that that has to be the main issue that we're concerned with, and the bathroom issue can sort itself out. And I really want to commend the students who've spoken today, and the parents who've spoken today, and they're much more comfortable with public speaking than I am, so I really respect their bravery. So I commend the board, and I hope you will adopt these guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Victor Torres is next, followed by Jose Ibarra.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Victor Torres. I will be celebrating 25 years of marriage here on May 4th this year with my lovely wife, Tammy.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Together, we have three beautiful daughters. Victoria just turned 21. Emily is 17, and my youngest is Michaela Grace, she's 16. My father once told me, he said, "Son, you will never know how much you love your children." Love, you will never know how much you love your children till you have your own." Those words, they just ring true in my ears almost every day as I look at my daughters. And for this reason, I stand before you or sit before you today. This type of arena is new for me. I have never stood before a Board of Education, or any board for that matter. I have always known and held in high esteem the work that a Board of Directors initiates and follows through on. Because of this daunting task and final decisions it must make for the betterment of the people, I would like to thank you for your dedication and hard work for the families of the state of Michigan. I come before you as a son, a brother, a husband, and as a father, in the hopes that you would consider my thoughts and comments concerning the draft that has been put to the... you would consider my thoughts and comments concerning the draft that has been put together by the State Board of Education on safe and supporting learning environments for LGBTQ students. I believe all of us can remember our teenage years, our pre-teen years, and some of us can even remember our elementary years. Some of us would look back at those years and think that those were good years, and I bet some of us would look back and wish that we could erase some of those early years, if it were possible. Heck, I think I had a traumatic experience when it got toward the end of the first day of sixth grade, and I found out there was no recess. The thought of leaving behind things of comfort and boundaries that give definition, like nap times, birthday parties, cupcakes, and recess, things that brought definition and certain identity, were now being shaken and turned upside down, not only by different time settings and curricular activity, but also new challenging social interaction. This isn't a small change. This is a large change, especially for children. We are talking about young people that are, in essence, wet cement. Impressionable young people, easily frightened, innocent little beings with undeveloped minds. Minds that will now embark on a journey of some of the most tempestuous, turbulent, volatile, passionate times of their lives, and it's called puberty. As a young boy in elementary school, I can remember the thought of liking girls was right up there with dreading to come, dreading to come to the call of my mother while she held a spoon filled with castor's oil just ready for me. The following year, I can remember admiring pretty girls, and even grown women, for that matter. Things were changing, not just times and seasons, but my own body. Certain parts of my anonymity began to change, not only change, but feel different. If we could step into the mind of a young boy or a young girl at these developmental years, we could be stepping into, in essence, what is wet cement. These are the formative years. The years that partnering, that parenting now kicks into high gear, so to speak. The years that go beyond guarding against sharp corners on coffee tables and protective electrical socket covers. These are the years that, as parents, we begin to shape the hearts and minds of our children. That when they get older, they will have a strong sense of a direction, morals and values, harnessed with conviction of what is right and what is wrong. Three minutes?
You could just wrap up.
Let me just finish up here at the end, then. These are so, these are times that are truly developing our children. And I am asking for the State Board of Education to consider another way than the one proposed in the draft, especially the essence of leaving the parents with the unknowns. These are precious years that we have with our children to be able to pour into them and help shape them. I understand the differences that people are having and the many different things that are happening, and we teach our children to be accepted, acceptable for other individuals, but at the same time, to be left in the dark when their formative years are happening would be tragic for the family, for the family situation. I'm asking that when submitting a better way, that your own lives and your children and your grandchildren would be the defining thoughts that would help in refining a new proposal. I am asking to consider the extreme mental processing that will be forced upon all of our children in the most formative and delicate years, ultimately hardening these attributes in their hearts for a lifetime to come. I'm asking the State Board of Education to please consider another way. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jose Ibarra, followed by Patrick Ruse.
First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the time dedicated here for the education of our children in the state of Michigan. I appreciate you taking the time and the effort that you've put forth. First of all, I'd like to welcome all the people from the LGBTQ community here. I am not a parent of or against LGBTQ. However, I do realize that this is an issue that has been brought to the forefront. And what you have proposed in the, in your proposal here is not the answer. The answer is education. All of you are educators of some sort, and if you have failed as an educator, it will be at this point. Enforcement or lack thereof of the current bullying policies should be your main focus. A lot of this comes back to bullying, and the lack of, or totally the overlooking of the current bullying policies is a failure. The second thing is, you have to look at the evidence as a whole. How does this stands to affect, how does this stand to affect the non-LGBTQ students? Right now, we're all on the right side of the boat. We need to look at the whole thing. We have issues all throughout the school system, all throughout the state, and just one particular issue is going to sink the boat with all of us on one side looking over here. The financial effects on the local school systems also, we have to remember that, that it's going to require some financial input, not only from the state, but from the local government, to make the changes required. And also, the financial effect it'll have on the schools as parents begin to pull their students out of the schools. And it may not be in all, in all school districts, but it shall be in some, simply because parents are not understanding. And again, it comes back to education. And again, all of you are educators in some point or not. And I want to, and I want to caution you as you go forth, simply because this is the same mentality that was taken care, taken when Flint decided to change their water. Not every policy, not everything was looked at. And I would hate to have a Flint-type catastrophe in our school system in this Michigan, you know, in the state of Michigan. This is something that you need to look at and have to find a better way. There has to be a better way. You cannot just look at one aspect and expect it to be correct like they did in Flint. You have to look at the whole thing, the whole thing. And secondly, I just want to, to remind you that your main focus is that when our kids leave the Michigan public schools, that they leave with a quality education. They leave feeling that they have gotten an education that can carry them somewhere else. That's my time. I'd like to thank each and every one of you. God bless you. God bless the state of Michigan, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Patrick Ruse is next, followed by Nicole England.
I want to start by saying thank you for all the work you've put into the statement and guidance memorandum for safe and supportive learning environments for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students. This is not a simple matter, and will affect the lives of everyone in this room, not to mention every family in the state of Michigan now and in the future. Let me be clear, I'm not here to speak for or against a specific group of our society. I think we all need to get past choosing sides and look at the needs of our children. For a moment, let's talk about the child or teen that is going through an identity crisis would consider themselves a transgender student. The Youth Suicide Prevention Program states that transgender youth has a 50% suicide rate. Folks, we need to address and approach this problem as an entire community, not as one entity separate from the community. These children are killing themselves, and we need to come up with a plan that is based on the benefits of the child, not based on politics or media rhetoric. I am encouraged when I read such items as, and I quote, "Ensure that parents and guardians are engaged and supportive partners in their child's education," end quote, which is number five of the strategic goals of the top 10 and 10 you make reference to in this memo. I'm confused, however, and appalled as a parent and as a previous overseer of over 1,000 children, that this board went from engaging and supporting parents to the exclusion of parents, which is stated in page five, number one, two, and three of this memo. The American Psychological Association states in their article titled LGBTQ Students and Safe Schools, and I quote, "School personnel seeking to support LGBTQ adolescents should begin," let me repeat, "should begin by working with the families." To go to the point of hiding information based on the child's rights, who, by the way, have no legal right until the age of 18, is contradictory and inappropriate. Although there are some positive options included in this memo, item five, page six says, and I quote, "A student should not be required to use a locker room that is incongruent with their gender identity," end quote. This is not thinking of the circumstances that face, that face the child with this dilemma. At some point, a child who believes they are transgender student came to the conclusion that they were born in the wrong body, or even with the wrong equipment. Folks, that same student does not need to be thrown into a locker room with a bunch of students that have the right equipment and expected not to feel different. That's not going to help. Lastly, this document provides serious legal issues that could impact every public figure involved in the student, including those in this room who directed administrators to hide information from the parent or guardian. I recently spoke to a law student, I'm wrapping up now, sir. I recently spoke to a law student, and the legal term is called actual malice. When an action is done that has intent to hide the truth, there is legal premise that could be filed as a lawsuit. For example, if the State Board of Education goes through with this document, as it is, and the local administrators, teachers, principals, et cetera, communicate to the parents based on the child's direction about their gender identity, and does not disclose to the parent what is transpiring, the parent has a legal right to file suit against anyone involved in harm, or that is determined, that has come to this child through this action. We need to all pause and adjust our approach as a state of helping our children. We need to see there's a better way than the one presented in this memo. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Nicole England is next, followed by Sandra Cal.
Thank you for having me. My name is Nicole England. My husband and I are parents of three great kids. Two of my children have been victims of bullying in the public school system. One of my children has been repeatedly harassed by a child who identifies with the LGBTQ community, not only verbally, but through touching. It has been such a huge problem that I have had not, had to not only take to my child's school in an attempt to stop the ongoing bullying, but also in counseling. She tried to kill, she was cutting herself. Roles reversed, my child would be the cause of a hate crime. Who is protecting my child at school? We have taught our children agree to disagree without judgment. I also have a special needs child. The anxiety in my child on a normal day exceeds most adults in crisis situations. Things out of their normal routine can and will be an issue that the teachers and I will have to handle, either in removing from the classroom, approaching from another way, requiring additional staffing, or myself personally. A simple example, for my child, if there is a substitute teacher, the school has to let me know ahead of time. Or my child will have an anxiety so bad that he makes himself sick. Nonroutine or normal for my child would be damaging and a setback for my child's growth. For my special needs child, you would be promoting confusion to an already confused and unstable mind, therefore, going against your staff and the parents, of which we struggle daily, to set stable ground for growth and unstable child, and an unstable child. In the bullying situation with my other child, I have come to realize that despite what everyone in the media wants you to believe, some bullying begins with the students who are LGBT community towards the other students, whether they are sympathetic to them or not. What has been created are breeding grounds where the bullying will grow for both sides, if not addressed. If it's a problem now, what will it be if we do not handle this correctly? As a parent, I am expected to be notified by the school if my child is having problems socially, academically, or in any, by any way by the school while they are in your care. After all, that's the key. I am entrusting you with my children, and right now, I'm losing faith and trust, as so many are right now. I am the parent, not the Board of Education. I don't care if you contact me every day. My child's records and decisions are my responsibility, my heart and soul, and not yours to determine. School is for learning, and it's supposed to be a safe place to do that, not a political stand for the community against the other. Protecting my children's innocence and their right to privacy is also a responsibility both my husband and I take very seriously. I totally oppose this proposal as it stands. In my opinion, you are overcompensating for one group and ignoring the majority, and that on either level is unacceptable for both sides. There has to be a better way.
Thank you for being here.
Sandra Cal is next, followed by Doug Lipnitz.
My name is Sandy Cal, and I'm from Goodrich, Michigan. I am a parent and a grandparent. My concern with this proposal is that this board seems to have some confusion on what biological sex and gender identification means. No one is born with a gender. They are born with a biological sex. What gender you identify with, and should be, between the child and the parent, not the school and a child. A child is an underage person who requires a parent or a guardian. The Board of Education, whether at the federal, state, or local level, does not have the right to be a parent or a guardian of a child and withhold such vital information as what gender the child identifies with or personal records. Over the years, as a parent and grandparent, I have volunteered at many community youth centers and have witnessed bullying originating from straight kids and originating from those who are in the LGBT community. I have also helped kids who are physically, sexually, and emotionally abused and lack protection from deviance in our society and their families. I know personally the effect abuse has on a child and a teen, and on their emotional development. It breaks your heart every single time, and it's why I'm here to ask you to reconsider your options. People who abuse women and children know the system and how to abuse it. In providing questionable services to a fraction of the transgender community, that's a total in the, 3% total in the LGBT community, you would expose 100% all of our students, including those in that community of our school population, to abuse and their rights to privacy and the parent's right to parent. I have grandkids within the last year who have been bullied in public school. One child is in kindergarten. In a public school where the teacher sat in a rocking chair in a corner with a Bluetooth speaker, ignoring the students not directly in front of her, while kids in a corner table out of the teacher's direct sight made this child feel so badly about herself, she began sucking her fingers, having accidents and throwing tantrums, behavior that was new and disturbing in the classroom and at home. After the parent made numerous visits to the classroom in observation, the principal was confronted. His reaction was that funding kept up from having necessary personnel in the classroom. There was no retraining effort, no classroom restructuring. When this kindergarten child was removed from this classroom and unsupervised students, she no longer had any of those symptoms and is excelling in her present school. My point is, if we do not have the funds to take care of the bullying, bullying and suicide at epidemic rates from our elementary schools to our high schools that exists in our schools today, nor the oversight to monitor the staff, how will you address the additional funding needed for psychological staffing and facility changes that will be required with this proposal? Leaving it up to local school board opens this up even more for potential abuses in interpretation and implementation, to save the least of funding. Most schools already have bullying agendas that have not received the attention this proposal is getting. Why don't you start with that, reinforcing what is already to the benefit of every child and alien, and not alienating the rest? I see this proposal as an attempt at desensitizing students with the gender identity agenda by the LGBT agenda, and to think this board is a part of that agenda is alarming, and it will not have the effect you expect. It will polarize people. You have, you only have to read the headlines within the last couple of weeks to see where this is headed. Your job on this board is not to make us into better people. No matter what spin you put on any item on this proposal, I can find just as many arguments and experts to counter each proposed item. This just does not protect anyone. Abuse is abuse. Privacy is privacy. Privacy is privacy. My rights as a parent are my rights, and you are not protecting any of them, which is my business as a taxpayer and a parent. I wonder because of the political timing in this proposal, if this proposal is being pushed because it is a political jewel in the upcoming elections, or maybe a political quest of someone on this board. I don't know any of you, but hope after hearing and seeing all the input from concerned citizens across the state that you reconsider this proposal and remember that children in Michigan schools are not pawns to be used by any group, be it financial, political, or for personal gain. I strongly urge this board to scrap this proposal and consider a better way to address this very complex issue.
Thank you for being here.
Next speaker is Doug Lipnitz, followed by Michael Searing.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
I'm Doug Lipnitz. I'm a parent in Birmingham, Michigan, and I truly appreciate all your efforts to improve the safety for all students throughout the state of Michigan, including all the LGBTQ community as well. I do oppose the current proposition as currently written, mainly on two points. The first being the removal of the parent consent, being able to designate your sex without parental permission. You know, a lot of these young kids, they're not old enough to vote, they're not old enough to buy cigarettes, they're not old enough to buy lottery tickets, as a previous speaker had said. A few are, but most are not, and most can't even sign their own permission slip to go on a field trip with their school. So I think it would be incongruent to think that they could make a decision that, without their parents, that would affect them for the rest of their lives. So I would strongly encourage a rewrite of the current proposal, including some parental conclusions of that. The other, it just has to do with safety. I think that definitely safety has to be improved. We've heard many stories of the bullying that's occurred at school to many LGBTQ students, and I think reinforcement of current bullying policy would improve their situation, and I think we're trying to just improve the safety for a small segment of the students at large and ignoring the safety risk to many of the other students, young girls, young boys, that could potentially see their safety decreased, the majority of them, just to improve the safety for minorities. So I just, I appreciate the board's efforts, and this is an important issue to try and move forward on, but I have to oppose the current rule as written. So, thank you again.
Thank you for being here.
Michael Searing is next, followed by Terrence Redman.
Hello. I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to listen to the comments today, and I just ask that you have an open mind for all the comments that are being given here today. I come before you as a parent of four and a grandparent of 10. Number 11 is in the yellow. As a parent, my main issue with this document is in relation to parents. It says that, it says propose for safe and secure learning environment. In order for that to happen, there needs to be stability. In order for stability, there needs to be consistency. In order to be consistency, those that are raising the child, let's not call them a student, because we're dealing with children here. There needs to be agreement to have that consistency. And if somebody involved in that does not necessarily agree, we don't eliminate that person. In this case, I'm talking about the parent. We don't eliminate a parent because we're concerned that the parent may not go along with what's taking place. There's three paragraphs having to do with this guidance, and it comes up, number one, names and pronouns, number two, student records, and all of these things are for an open situation in the schools. We want to call them by the names that they want to be called, we want to do all these other things, and then we come down to privacy and confidentiality regarding disclosures. And we're going to call them by the name that's on their birth certificate. We're going to call them by the sex that's on their birth certificate. We have a double standard here. In the school, we're going to do one thing, but once we're on the phone with a parent, we're going to be deceived. We've got a whole different child? No, we're dealing with the same child. If you want consistency and you want them to be able to grow, we're going to have to involve the parents. Parents have to be able to be advised, they can't be misled as to what's taking place. Otherwise, there's not a team involved here. My grandchildren are not being raised by committee, they're being raised by a parent. They're not being raised as social experiment, they're being raised by parents. Their parents' moralities, their parents' values, their parents' standards, and each person here has a different set of standards, morals, and values. And I would hope that some committee doesn't take that child away from you and say, "I'm going to teach them this way." I would hope that you would be a good parent. Now, none of us here were perfect parents, and none of us here had perfect parents. But you know what? They were our parents. We learned through the good and the bad, and parents have got to be involved in this. There is no way we can take parents out of this equation and expect to have a healthy child. Now, of course, if you've got somebody who's being abusive, that's a different situation. Abuse, we step in. There's a saying that says, "It takes a village to raise a child." And I propose to you that it takes a village to raise a village idiot. It takes a parent to raise a child, and it takes a village to support that parent in doing so. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Terrence Redman is next, followed by John Love.
Hi. My name is Terrence Redman, and I live in Flint, and my school district is Carmen's Ainsworth. First, let me say, I do not believe that anyone in this room have a discrimination or hatred towards the LGBT community or the LGBTQ students in our public schools, just because someone may disagree with this document. I found that this document takes away the rights of the parents to know what is happening with their children during school and school activities. This document also lacks the views and opinions of our heterosexual students. From the footnote of this document and the book name, Harsh Realities, it states how transgender students felt unsafe at school. But the only problem is, it doesn't say how the student felt unsafe. Was it because of harassment, bullying from other students who believed that they were all of the same gender? The document goes on to say transgender students were physically assaulted within the last year because of their gender expression. So if we think that the LGBTQ student will be safe because they can choose whichever restroom or locker room that they feel is appropriate for them, and harassment would not come from individuals who may look like how they, transgender students, may be feeling, we need to think again, because there is a better way. Two things. Heterosexual students have a right to privacy also. This document says, "The SBE is committed to promoting a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students and ensure that every student has equal access to educational programs and activities." How can this be if our heterosexual students cannot practice their right to privacy? As a parent, I am responsible for my child's well-being. I cannot be excluded from my minor child's school records, nor can I be excluded from what he or she wants to be called at school. It is a, it is as if this proposal is trying to tell others how to see my child. This document also states that schools should provide a welcome environment for diverse families, including those that are headed by LGBTQ parents, and are encouraged to educate families, communities about the SBC statements and guidance. But what about race, religion, sex, and other groups that are recognized on school grounds? Will these groups have a designated building-level staff member who is conversed in issues related to what they believe? We can find a common ground within our community, from educators, from community leaders, and from parents. Let me suggest one thing. It's called boundaries. The board is being asked to pass a document that supersedes their educational responsibilities within our community. We live with boundaries. Our lakes, our rivers, our oceans, all have boundaries. We have boundaries on how we can treat each other, and yes, our students have boundaries also. They can't wear a permanent shirt because the words might be offensive to others. Every day, we face boundaries in our lives, but it seems as if when it comes to our sexuality, it's an open road, and this should not be. I'm asking that the board turn down this proposal because it limits our community more than uplifts our community. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for being here.
John Love is the next speaker, followed by Amy Milligan.
If you could pass that down for me. Just one copy. Oh, sorry. It's just one side? Flip side. All right. Bullying's a problem, and it's interesting, revealing to have that discussion. I was involved, I was victim in my school at one time, too, and it's, you know, it isn't just this group, but it's special ed students that get it, ones that are, just don't appear right or whatever, and don't fit into the equation. This is a very difficult problem, but bullying has to be fixed. I've come here and talked about what's wrong, so I decided I'd come this time and talk about what needs to be done to fix education now. The ISD intermediate school systems, there are too many of them. There should just be five areas because your span of control is only five, not the number you have, so you need to reform that, get them in here and talk about it. Money in the emergency teams. Emergency managers, there's four of them, when does the emergency start? You have the constitutional responsibility to manage this, and you haven't. That's the way it works. The governor is incapable of managing this system. Now he's put a bankrupt judge in charge of it. Wayne State should be involved in it. Also on the back here is the Citizen Research Council came up with a plan on how to manage the money better. You need to take care of those two items, you should have them come in here and talk to you. You don't believe what I'm talking about. The payments, there should be three tiers in the payment system for schools. The elementary school should not get the same amount of money that you give to a real school system, period. You have the authority to affect this, and you're not dealing with it. High school, should be, elementary have one, high school, and then special education students should have a different payment system. They were switched out of the state system into the schools to fix the problem, but they're not being paid for it. You should end it at 19, and then it should transition into something that the state pays the whole bill for, not burden Detroit or systems with this responsibility. Testing should apply to all students. They have a national system. Test them when they come in the door at the beginning of the year and where they are at the end of the year. So you have an example of how they are performing, every one of them, and not this complicated system. It's a national system, they can give you the results the next day. That's what you do to manage the system, and if you want to go this 10-10 and whatever, you need to start right now and make some changes, and these are the ones that I've outlined for you to look at and implement now, not 10 years or whatever you're talking about. You read that 10-year system, I can't even understand the thing. What are the goals? Every child's going to be educated? What a concept.
Thank you for being here.
Amy Milligan is next, followed by Kelsey Kavanaugh Strong.
Hello, thank you for the three minutes, and thanks to everyone's patience for hearing out everyone today. My name is Amy Milligan. I'm a parent. I have three children in the Ann Arbor Public School System. My daughter is 10, she goes to Haisley, she's here with me today. And I have two sons that are seven that attend Eberwhite Elementary. I also work for the Neutral Zone, which is a teen center in Ann Arbor. I do not speak for the Neutral Zone, I'm here sharing my own perspective today. However, as part of my role at the Neutral Zone, I'm privileged to have brought several of the young people with us today to give them a chance to have their voices heard. And I've been listening very carefully to what's been said. As a practice, I tend not to speak for youth. I tend to prefer to let youth speak for themselves, I find they do so very well. And I feel that the youth that have spoken today already have both made me feel very proud and humbled because they have brought forth more evidence, more research, more facts about the rates of suicide. I heard an adult say 50% of transgender people commit suicide, which is insane, and I don't know where that figure came from. But I can tell you that the youth that presented today had really well-researched facts and information, and I'm really proud to have that brought before us. We also had a senator go off-topic about trombones and AIDS when we were discussing a policy that protects transgender youth in our school, which I found dismissive and insulting to the experiences of the youth, who've described to you for themselves what their day-to-day life is like in these elementary schools, middle schools, high schools across our state. And these kids don't feel safe, and they don't feel supported, and they don't feel welcome. A lot of the criticisms I've heard of this policy don't seem to actually be reflected in the language of the policy itself. And I think very highly of most of the folks here on the school board, and I know some of your backgrounds, so I know that you've actually read all of it. And so I probably don't need to point out, but I'd like to anyway. There's nothing in this bill that tells teachers and principals that they cannot talk to a youth, a student's, parents. There is absolutely nothing in here that precludes that. I've heard the word "required," I've heard the word "forbidden." This is inflammatory language that does not represent what this bill has to offer. What this bill provides is guidelines. These are recommendations. And when a teacher, those of you who've been educators, as I know many of you have, as a teacher, as a principal, you use these guidelines as a tool, as a source of information, and then you make your own decision. I also heard a lot of people saying, "Well, it's fine if a kid's in an abusive situation." But what I urge this group to do is consider not requiring a student to provide evidence of an exception to some kind of rule, but to empower our educators to speak on behalf of our kids, even if myself as a parent would be left out of a conversation, that if my kid couldn't come to me and tell me something so personal, I hope to God they had someone they could tell, and they weren't afraid. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Our next speaker is Kelsey Kavanaugh Strong, followed by Carleen Saluznik.
All righty. Hello, I thank you all for letting me be here as well. My name is Kelsey Kavanaugh Strong, and I'm the education coordinator at the Neutral Zone, and I'm really just going to follow up what my colleague so wonderfully summed up. I am also not here to speak on behalf of the Neutral Zone, but think it's pretty important to put out that the Neutral Zone is a space that is youth-led, youth-driven, and we really work towards allowing youth to have their own voice in regards to leadership development, fine arts development, exploring who they are, no matter that is their own identity, what it is they want to do in their life, so on and so forth. And I personally believe that students should have that type of support and resources, not just in an after-school program, but where it is that they go to school. And I heard somebody say that it starts with education, and I absolutely agree with that, but a student is not going to access the best resources that they can have. but a student is not going to access the best resources that they can have and get the best education that they can get if they do not feel safe and supported in their school. And if anybody knows the resources and support that you can get from having access to parents and calling parents, it's me. I believe that parents are a wonderful resource. But when it comes to speaking about youth, especially from this population, it is often the parents or faith-based organizations or other places that people have talked about gaining support, that they are lacking support. And I wholeheartedly believe that if a student is being bullied at school, or if a student is really struggling academically or so on and so forth, that we should have the ability and access to call parents. I think most people in the space believe that. But when it comes to what a child wants to be called in the classroom, which bathroom they want to use, what they are choosing to present as their gender identity or who it is in their school, nobody, nobody has the permission to tell somebody or decide that besides the individual. We do not need to call a parent to ask them, "Can I call your name this," or your child this name? Can they go into this bathroom? No matter the age of a child, no matter the age of a person, that is the individual's choice, and I believe that's what this bill is proposing. I do not believe that it is proposing that we should never call parents, that parents cannot be in access to us, so on and so forth. I believe that this is saying that teens, youth, whoever it is, need to have that choice, and I support that. I have also heard, as Amy pointed out, the concerns of bathrooms and things of that nature. I hear that as well. It's something that we even face in our organization. I know that somebody in this room brought this up earlier, and I believe that if there's a better way to approach this, it is to say that unisex bathrooms need to be put in every single school. If we are afraid of bullying that may occur, if transgender teens can go into a bathroom, then create bathrooms that somebody can go in and lock the door behind them, and no matter who they are, they have the privacy in the bathroom. And so I believe that that's the best way to approach that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Carleen Saluznik is next, followed by Jim Kasha.
Did a pretty good job of pronouncing my last name, too. I thank you.
Oh, good.
I was minding my own business in the other week, read about these guidelines on the Internet, and a story came to my mind that I read, written by a guy named Luke, and he said, "In those days, Caesar Augustus published a decree ordering a census of the whole world. This first census took place while Cyrenus was governor of Syria. Everyone went to register each to his own town." And I thought, of you, Mr. Wiston, and I thought, this could be written as, "In those days, Caesar Brian Wiston published a decree ordering a census of the whole world. This first census took place while Rick Snyder was governor of Michigan." I think people are upset because if we get right down to what you're doing, somehow you have given yourself authority to change the definition of a word, words, male and female. The definition is not by how you refer to it as anatomy, but by perception or feelings. And because of that, some of the unintended consequences which other people have spoken to, well, first of all, the authority to change words, I don't know where you received that authority, because we're talking about the natural. I would say then you have supernatural authority above the natural. What I see happening is, what happens to the legal documents in Michigan? The birth certificates, the death certificates, the driver's license, schooling laws? If, why would a student even need to be in school or be taught anything if his perception supersedes reality? They know. Also, equality or laws on the books. Now some people are more equal than others. And in that regards, if somebody that feels or perceives to be a woman is more, is above the actual woman. And then finally, I would leave you with, I don't know about perception of being a woman or a feeling of a woman. I am a woman. And some people, what you're proposing, are more, a man who feels he is a woman has more rights than me as a woman.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Jim Kasha is next, followed by Nan Omira.
My name is Jim Kasha. I live in Norwich, Ontario, Canada, birthplace of Herbert Hoover's mother, but anyway. I'm originally from Michigan. But I did one smart thing in my life. I married a Canadian, so I get to live over there. But anyway, I hadn't planned on talking to the board here today, but I came to Lansing on a couple of other issues. One, the Flint water crisis, and the other, the release of the Detroit, the Department of Health and Human Services budget by the House and Senate. But hearing about this on the radio, I couldn't help but take this opportunity, especially since over on the weekend, there was an article in the Detroit Free Press about this topic, about special education, and one of your board members, Michelle Beckto, was mentioned in there. So I'm going to bypass my other meetings, since they don't listen to me anyway, and I'm going to sit here and give you my public comment. I better go quick. In his very first stated the state address, a few weeks after taking office, Governor Snyder stated in his education reform plan that we have to start prenatally. WJR's Frank Beckman laughed at him. But on this issue, Governor Snyder was right. In a follow-up interview with previous school superintendent Mike Flanagan, he told Frank Beckman that Governor Snyder was right, and he's right. So the article I referenced was an article about charter schools not taking their fair share of special education kids. But the question really is, is not, where do we educate special education kids? It should be, why do we have so many special education kids? Okay? A report generated by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in November 2014 states that of 130,000 pregnant women interviewed over six years, 22% stated that they drank while pregnant. Now, prevention is the best solution to this problem, as it costs four times the cost to educate, try to educate a child with a special education needs. So where do we go from here? What I'm asking this board's help for is, since they haven't been listening to me for 10 years, we almost got some money for an alcohol prevention program for pregnant women last year's budget, but now with the Flint crisis, we get nothing. And I was really disappointed, once again, for 10 years I've been coming up here trying to get some funding. We neglect this group of students and our citizens, our most vulnerable citizens, as Michelle could state, many of them are foster children. 70% of foster kids are affected by prenatal alcohol issues. It's the number-one cause of cognitive disabilities in North America, and it's 100% preventable. And why don't we do something? And so please, I ask this board to try to do something, to convince the legislators that we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And I'd like to leave a copy of this. I only have one. I wasn't prepared, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Nan Omira. I believe she's the final speaker, and then I've got a statement to read.
Hi, everyone. I just want to, well, actually, I wasn't going to speak today, but I decided probably I should. I'm a grandma, I'm a mom, I'm a great-grandma, and I've been a teacher in Lansing. My husband's been a teacher in Lansing for 35, 40 years, so I think I come with a teacher's perspective, having heard from my husband, plus also a parent's perspective, and a grandparent's perspective, and so on. What just keeps coming to me to say is that this problem, let's see, I wanted to say that Jesus said in the Bible, "If you are not with me, you are against me." And He said, He loves people. He loves everyone in this room, and He loves the people who are struggling with this issue of identity, and He doesn't want anyone to be harmed. So I think sometimes we forget where we should be looking, you know? I don't support this policy because it involves deception. I know that values, regardless of how you look at anything, when teachers teach, values are transferred, you know? And I believe that a lot of our values in the past, because I'm 76, so I've had a history of seeing how things go, a lot of our values are actually transmitted through teachers in a school environment. And although they may not say they're Christians, I grew up in a time when it was just a standard thing for values to be based on Judeo-Christian heritage. And whether you're Christian or not, most of us would agree that those are good values. And it wasn't always outspoken in the schools, but we, the country kind of understood that this was a good value system to live by. And you see in the world today that not everyone lives by that value system. So I'm just saying that values are transferred, that they come from, you know, a heritage of Judeo-Christian, but, and I'm saying that I think the issue is here to show love, but I think this could create a lot of problems. To me, it doesn't seem like two and two make four here. This isn't a way, the best way to solve this situation. I think it could create some problems for people who don't, who aren't of this persuasion or whatever. I think it's, there's got to be a better way, and I think a lot of things have been mentioned, even of separate bathrooms or whatever, where, I think the answer is in prayer. I think if you go to the Lord, He can show you the answer to these problems. I've had that happen so many times in my life. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
This last statement that I have to read is from Representative Tom Hooker, who was in attendance this morning. And he writes, "As a member of the House 77th District, a member of the House Education Committee, and a retired teacher for 37 years at Byron Center Public Schools, I am strongly opposed to the Board of Education proposed policy concerning transgender students' treatment in the schools. My constituents are almost unanimously opposed to this proposed guideline. I am very concerned as a grandpa with four granddaughters in the public school system and the loss of safety and rights and the danger it could bring, removing parental knowledge and the inherent risks by allowing students to choose which bathroom or locker room to use. The plan to only require students who object to anatomically different student being in their bath or locker room to request a private location. Teachers are at risk for possibly sharing gender choices with parents who have legal right to know. This policy needs to be withdrawn completely. Sincerely, Representative Tom Hooker." And I believe that's the end of public comment.
That is the end of public comment, but people can still go online and leave their comments to May 11, and then the board will receive all the comments and decide on the direction they would like to go after that. Going back to the Legislative Committee, do we have a revised draft?
Yes. I think she's passing it out.
Do you want to go ahead and read it out loud so the audience will have it?
Sure. So the updated draft states, "The State Board of Education supports updating Section 1280(c) of the Revised School Code to reflect the reauthorization of the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESCEA, through the passage of the Every Student Succeeds Act. As you may know, the ESSA has fewer prescriptive requirements than the No Child Left Behind Act, the previous version of the law. The ESSA is designed to allow for increased local control and stakeholder involvement. With this in mind, the Michigan Department of Education is forming a work group for stakeholder input on updating state law and guidelines to further reflect the ESSA provisions, and will be developing new policies and practices to be most effective in supporting school turnaround. We invite you to join this work group, and will keep you informed of meetings if you wish for us to do so. At the present time, the SBE encourages the immediate removal of outdated references to federal law in Section 1280(c) of the Revised School Code. The Race to the Top Grant Program and the American Recovery Reinvestment Act of 2009 mandated school redesign plans to require implementation of one of four school intervention models that are required for the lowest-achieving schools. These models are the turnaround model, restart model, school closure, and transformation model. Michigan added these models to Section 1280(c) to be eligible to compete for the since-expired federal grants. These requirements are no longer reflected in the ESSA."
So can we have a motion to put it in front of us, please? It's been moved. Is there support? Now, will have discussion? Any discussion on the revised draft? Boy, I'm going to take that silence and move on if you don't hurry up.
Hit it. Hit the button.
Silence is golden. No, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't it be? Wouldn't it be great? Silence is golden. Just as a point of editing, in the second paragraph, I would just start off the last sentence with, "ESSA has fewer prescriptive requirements." But then, and I'd like where it's headed, and then I would say to you that because you are now saying we are developing new policies and practices that will effectively support school turnaround, it's very obvious that if you remove the current ones that support school turnaround, you have nothing going on until the new ones are developed. So I would encourage a friendly amendment that gets rid of at the present time and starts off with, in the 1, 2, 3, 4 paragraph, "The State Board of Ed encourages the removal," and leave off "immediate" because they're not going to do it, and it doesn't make sense to have them do it. But if you say that, you could say the future removal, or just the removal of outdated references to federal law, because then it ties into the fact that a new business plan is being developed that's going to still address those schools.
I'm not sure why we are automatically assuming that the legislature will not want to update the law. I mean, I'd rather give them the option of doing that as opposed to saying, "We know you're not going to, but here you go anyway."
Well, I don't think that they would want to just leave the state without a model for turning around schools because we're asking it. So I think that the second that there's a new development from the Department of Education, that they would certainly come forward with law changes to reflect a better plan. But I don't think that you're going to have them just drop an existing set of state government because we want to have them do it.
But it's not that we're suggesting that there be nothing in place. We're simply saying that these, being prescriptive in law, is not necessary. Maybe leave it up to people who know what they're doing to develop appropriate methods and models to help turn around schools.
You can do whatever you want to do. I'm simply telling you that I see a different political reality than you do, and I think what we want to have happen is to empower the department to do the best job possible for the children of Michigan, and I think that this will be viewed as an oddity in that program and that plan, so.
Michelle?
We did pass a policy on turnaround a few months ago.
Shortly after I came, yeah.
The department, I mean, and then we have the, you know, the recommendations from the top 10 and 10. So I don't know if we should reference what we have done so far in terms of, especially in the terms of where it talked about what to do around the turnaround models. Because you remember the policy all discussed at one point? I don't know if we had unanimous support on that, but I think we did.
Yeah, there is a difference between having a business plan and ready to go and a political abstract, that we don't want this in place anymore, and we'll get something else developed in the meantime. You figure out what You figure out what you're going to do with the SRO, because we don't want it." So what I don't want to have happen is to have that perception in the legislature. What I want is a mature board and department unity on a plan that makes sense from a governmental perspective. This, removing it from law and having no plan to replace it or to use those people would make no sense to the legislature. It is up to the majority to decide on that. I'm fine. I will vote against this, the way it's worded, but it certainly is prerogative of the majority. So if you feel strongly about it, you should go ahead.
Can we just strike immediate? It makes sense to say the removal of the policies.
Why don't you make a motion?
And the expectation of...
Okay. I think I was trying to do it.
Yep, okay.
A friendly amendment would be to have the fourth paragraph start with, "Thus, State Board of Education encourages removal of outdated references." And that would be it.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Can I just clarify? Are you suggesting that you would vote for it if we did that?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that mean that the rest of the paragraph is gone?
No, no.
No.
Strike the word immediate.[949.23][949.23](Laughter).
Remove everything after the...
No, no, we're just moving the word immediate. Yes, Kathleen?
Okay.
Yes.
And at the present time.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Read it again, please.
Oh, I think I better read the whole thing, which I didn't do before.
That's not necessarily...
Yeah.
That's the first line.
The devil's always in the details, and why bother? "The State Board of Ed encourages removal of outdated references to federal law in Section 1288, the Race to the Top Grant Program, blah, 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 that are required for the lowest-achieving schools. These models are the turnaround model, transformation model. We added these models. These requirements are no longer reflected in the ESSA." That's it.
Okay. It's been moved and supported on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All right, motion passes. We're back to the full body of the draft.
I had a question. In the second paragraph, well, the third paragraph, actually, the, they refer to it as ESSA nowadays, just, at least they did in NASBA, "is designed to allow for increased local control and stakeholder involvement." I would say for increased state responsibility and maybe local control. I don't know that it would be more local control, it's more state, or maybe state and local responsibility.
Is that going to be a positive or a negative?
Pardon me?
I said, would that be seen as a positive or a negative?
It's a reality. If the wording is right, the wording should be right to reflect what ESSA is, so...
I thought it was for more increased state, a more increased state role in this...
As opposed to federal.
As opposed to federal, right. Local is...
So what are we proposing to change?
"Is designed to allow for increased state, an increased state role rather than state, rather than federal role in..."
Increase, so at the start of the paragraph, "ESSA is designed to allow for increased state and local control," or just state, local?
We're talking about state. It's our responsibility, we're the state.
So strike local and say increased state control?
State, I don't know if it's control or...
No, I think it's state and local.
Responsibility or authority?
What about state role? Oh, never mind. I'm fresh out of brain mail.[1095.01][1095.01](Laughter).
Increased state role in developing, in developing its own policies.
Signed to allow for increased state control.
State role.
We don't want to drop stakeholder involvement. That's important.
Can we just say increased state and local control?
Yeah, if we do that, it'd be easier.
Thank you, Cassandra.
That's what I started out saying.
All right, Cassandra, move that. Is there support?
Support. Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Back to the draft.
I have one more question.
Yep.
This is being addressed to the chairs of the vice chairs of the committees. Is it usual policy that we, if they have questions, they go to the staff person of the department, or do they go to legislators?
Well, that, she is one of our legislative liaisons.
Oh, she is?
Yes.
Okay.
She works with Ben.
She does? Oh, she does work with Ben?
She spends a lot of time over in the legislature.
I thought it might be Ben or Marty.
On the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth paragraph regarding the intervention models, I read this as not taking a stand as to what should replace the intervention models, and I can support that. So I, and I guess I'm thinking, I mean, the original idea is you've got an intervention model in case, you know, the local administration doesn't do the response or isn't successful, so now you put it into other hands. I mean, I think that's my understanding of the logic of the intervention models.
Is it, I think, it's my understanding that if you're in that lowest achieving, the bottom 5%, you have to choose. Is that correct? Yeah, you have to choose one of these models.
If you've been identified as a priority, choose a model.
And I'm open to rethinking that, or letting the, letting the education committees rethink that, so I'm satisfied with it as it stands.
All right. So we're back to the full draft. All those in favor of the full draft, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero.
Wait, let's go back and remake the...
No, 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 no. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items you wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion? It's been moved and supported. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Comments by state board members? Any state board members who wish to make a comment? Richard?
I just want to point out, there's a big gap, there's a big suicide gap in our schools. Boys are four times more likely to commit suicide than girls. If, if increased rate of suicide is a sign of oppressive system, we need to acknowledge that our schools are very oppressive towards boys. And I think that's, that fact and others need to be subject of a broader view of policies to encourage safe schools. Would not want us to lose fact, lose sight of this as we discuss policies designed to help specific segments of students.
Thank you, Richard. Michelle, please.
I just want to note that Eileen and I will be discussing on Thursday on the restraint and seclusion bills. And I responded back that we could do it together.
And I'm hopeful that Elizabeth Bauer will send the comments that she had today.
Good.
And if the department, Ben, I don't know that we've done any analysis, had time to do analysis on the bills that they'll be discussing. Michelle in particular was questioning whether there is, whether there are penalties for schools that don't give teachers adequate training for NPBIS or other things that will allow them to move away from seclusion and restraint successfully.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm concerned about what the penalties, and if they're feared and if they're depressed.
It's as if people are dropping bills just to see how fast you can analyze them.[1382.73][1382.73](Laughter).
All right. Any other board comments? Do you have your hand up, Pam?
Yes. I think mine is a question in regard to the comments by Detroit Public School member, Lamar. He's been here a couple of times and has mentioned the audit, and I know we were talking about getting him some information, or getting the school board some information on the audit. I don't know if we ever clarified what they meant by audit, and if we got that. And I remember you, so they've been, it's been articulated to them as well? Okay. And then the Headley Amendment is another thing that he's brought up a couple of times, and so that has been clarified as well?
No, I don't think we've had any conversations on Headley Amendment, have we? I mean, I'll have to get ahold of him and ask him what he's wanting us to clarify. I mean, the Headley Amendment sets the cap by which we can spend money in the state, and we're 10 billion below the Headley Amendment, or 11 billion, but I don't know what he's talking about in terms of Detroit.
Unfunded, yeah.
Well, I wouldn't have any answer to that. I don't know.
I think they're talking about what they call a forensic audit, which goes way beyond the regular audit by the...
Right, but he wants to have the debt paid off, and that's being handled as part of the package, so I don't know why we would spend millions of dollars on an audit that we're paying off the debt anyway. I mean, we, I just, that's up to this board, if you want to call for something like that, but I think the issue's being addressed by the legislature's, legislature paying off the debt, so...
So I just wanted to be clear, because I heard forensic audit, then I heard something between the audit that's typically done and a forensic audit, something that really speaks to where did things go awry and when. So, and I just wanted to make sure that we clarified, and I'm just wondering if we did, because...
Well, we shared with him, we shared with him the report that was done by one of the private sector consultants, I don't remember which one it was, who outlined where the debt came from, and said, who, where did the debt come from, and we gave him a copy of that. And that, go ahead. No, you're fine.
Follow up on that. It's because of the indictments that came down around some appropriations. So I assume this would be some sort of a view of the funding and of the purchase orders, whatever, the accounting of that. Now, is that something that is subject, I assume that would be subject to FOIA, and that they're going to be doing some sort of a study of where's the money going, was it spent properly? And I think that was sort of where Lamar was going, he was saying that there's been some, under the emergency managers, it appears that there's been quite a bit of questionable spending, but that's what they want to get at. So I'm wondering if that, if there is a...
I can tell you that the district is sending out, I do not remember what they call these regional leaders they have now, but they're doing audits at all the schools of purchase or, I mean, those leaders are going out and doing audits of the schools. I can tell you, our finance team is going down to look at federal spending, to make sure the federal spending has been dealt with appropriately.
So this goes retro?
Yeah.
So that would be available to Lamar to, or the board to look at?
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
Well, and I like to say that the testimonies today were very powerful. They assured me that the concerns that I have, many people have, and so I hope we do ponder and really take seriously what was said to us today, plus all the thousands of comments that we've gotten. And we do the best job that we can to make this, it's not a policy, these guidelines as useful and efficient as we can. We have, I take this maybe too seriously.
Nope. It's very important work.
I was very, very, very touched by all the comments that were made here today.
And I just want to add on to that, our appreciation that everybody was very respectful, even though every, a lot of people in the audience disagreed with one another, the tone was 100% appropriate, and that was really great to see.
I thought they were very articulate, heartfelt, very well prepared.
Agreed.
So Pam, I'll go ahead and we'll get ahold of Lamar on the, on the Headley. I'm not, you know, quite sure what we can give him because, but I'll follow up on that one, and we can have the conversation with him on the audit, but that's up to the board, if you want to call for an audit or not. I mean, again, the legislature's paying off the debt, so I'm not sure why we'd want to encourage a very expensive audit, but that's up to the board.
Right. And like I said, I think that it's clarity in what he's asking for, because I can't recall what he was saying.
We did contact him, and we did...
Because he understood the cost of forensic audit, so it was something different. It was to ensure that if we said, as we set systems in place and policy is being written, that we don't find ourselves in the same shape, so...
And we all agree to that.
I think we already took a decision of more or less supporting 710.
Yeah.
I mean, you took a supporting, returning the board, returning the superintendent, but you did support the DAC and, yep.
Yeah, there were three, I think there were three things that he said, so two of those things, I think, were a little bit, one of them was the, so...
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, tentative agenda, oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Did you say something?
No. She's talking to me.[1769.63][1769.63](Laughter).
It's a secret note.
Okay. T tentative agenda for the next meeting. If there's anything you want to see on the agenda, please let anybody in the agenda planning group know. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, May 10, 9:30 regular meeting; Wednesday, May 18, board retreat; Tuesday, June 14, regular meeting; and Tuesday, August 9, regular meeting, all at 9:30. And with that, we are adjourning at, is that 3:17?